I'd like to call to order the Merrimack School District School Board meeting for May 20th, 2024. If you all rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to welcome everyone who's here tonight, and I would like to open up our meeting to public participation. If you would like to participate, please step up to the mic, state your name and address, and if you are a student, you do not need to state your address. All right, seeing none, we will move on to a really wonderful recognition tonight.
Well, we will be recognizing some superstars tonight who just won the Granite State Challenge again, and I'm going to read something to you here for a minute. This is from one of the advisors, Sarah Campbell, and I want to thank Sarah and Sally for all the work that they've done with our students. It says, "The Merrimack High School Granite State Challenge Team won this year's Super Challenge of their 24 appearances on the show. This was Merrimack's seventh trip to the finals. It's occurred in 1987, 2016, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024." This is the Merrimack High School equivalent of the New England Patriots, I have to tell you, okay, which is tied, all those appearances are tied for the most in Granite State Challenge history. This is the fifth year in a row that Merrimack has competed for the championship, another record, having won back-to-back in 2020 and 2021, finishing as runners-up in 2022, and clinching the championship again last year in 2023. A win this year gives Merrimack a second set of back-to-back championships, and they are the first team in Granite State Challenge history with four championship trophies, breaking a six-way tie at three championships with other school systems, Alveron, Hanover, Plymouth, Salem, and Wunnequam. The team that we will recognize is Kishan Srinivasan, and please let me know if I'm mispronouncing your names, Trey Grant, Erin Murray, Liam Clark, Shelby Pennington, and Avis, Avis is it Clever or Cleaver? Clever? So, we will be presenting them with certificates. Can't congratulate you enough. You, we are extremely proud of you, and I want you to carry this on into the future, knowing that you've done something that no other school district in this state has done. So, we'll congratulate you right now with some certificates.
Okay, I'm going to call each of your names individually so that you can go get your certificates. First, Liam Clark. Avis Clever. Trey Grant, who's not here tonight. Erin Murray. Shelby Pennington, who is also not here tonight. And Kishan Srinivasan, who is the captain. Before we finish up, we also want to obviously acknowledge their incredible coaches, Dr. Sarah Campbell and the assistant coach Sally Agel. Before we wrap up, Kishan wants to say a few words about his Granite State Challenge experience.
No worries. Hello, everyone. I am Kishan Srinivasan, the captain of this Granite State Challenge team for this year, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. So, some of you guys may be wondering, what is Granite State Challenge? Granite State Challenge is a high school quiz show that is similar to Jeopardy, in the sense that trivia questions are read and students buzz in order to get the question right and eventually move on in the tournament. But before all that starts, there's a qualifying test at the beginning of the year in which many teams have to take this 100-question test in order to even get into the tournament. Merrimack prides themselves on being able to get either the highest score or the second highest score in that qualifying test. We then move on to a single elimination tournament, and this year, we were able to play four matches in total since we went to the finals. I'm just going to repeat a couple of the stats that were already said, but Merrimack has won this year's championship with two back-to-back titles now, and that's the most titles in the league and the most wins overall with 44 wins. For me personally, this has been three years on the show now, and I've seen it from every angle. The first year, unfortunately, it was COVID, and I watched the team participate in the lobby of the PBS studio. Last year, I was an alternate and had a good part of the team, and we had won, and it was a great experience. This year, definitely my proudest year as captain, being able to lead the team to victory and uphold a great legacy was just amazing. There are so many great experiences that I've had along this journey and I've learned so much, not just trivia questions, but hard work, determination, and dedication. I've also been able to share these experiences with a great group of teammates and teammates in the past. I'm sure our team would love to tell you about our great team experiences, such as our coach, Dr. Sarah Campbell, making a poem at the beginning of the year to recap some of our best parts of the season and to hype us up before the first match. As captain, I also upheld the tradition of baking cupcakes decorated with our team's faces on them before our quarterfinal game. Practices are very natural, and it does not feel like we're cramming for a competition, and I believe that's a huge part of our success. Dr. Campbell and Mrs. Agel provide a great environment to make mistakes, learn, and grow. The season was great, and I'm thankful again for all the hard work that our team has put in and the outcome of the season. I cherish the season as it's my last, and I'm sure the other season nears me the same way. I've enjoyed this program thoroughly, and I'd love to extend a thank you on behalf of myself and the team to coaches Dr. Campbell and Mrs. Agel. Thank you.
All right, what a wonderful treat it is for the board to see such amazing students and to recognize them. All right, we will move on to informational updates with the superintendent update.
Thank you. Just a few things tonight. First of all, from Phil Carl, who was a woodworking teacher at the high school and an absolutely exceptional teacher on Saturday. The Merrimack High School wood shop and students participated for the second time and hosted a collaboration with the Guild of New Hampshire Woodworkers. They made some wig stands for patients, cancer patients, and what more honorable type of woodworking could they perform? And so, they were taken to a location, to a shop that fits cancer patients with wigs, and put to great use. So, to Phil, the students, and to the Granite State Guild, congratulations on a very honorable job and very honorable project. We're very proud of you. The Reed's Ferry Schoolhouse, number three, has been added to the National School Registry, as mentioned in the Nashua Telegraph. There's a school that dates back to the 1800s, about 1845 it was built, and so, glad to hear that designation. We have some athletic accomplishments that Chase is going to mention. We also have, I've got a couple of things here to mention also. The last day of school, please remember, is June 14th. So, not that anyone is counting, but there are 18 more school days left to the, to the school year, and I have to tell you, it's been a great year. We've had a wonderful school year. Thank you to all our staff, our students, and our parents. You know, we'll be mentioning it again as we get a little bit closer, but it's been a wonderful, wonderful school year. I want to recognize also that Merrimack Cable TV has recently won three national awards for different programs, Democracy in Action, Stow Road Bridge, and Chop Shop. They have done an outstanding job in covering events and are a very responsible and active cable program company and organization, and we congratulate them. And the last thing I'd like to mention is, this is the meeting just before Memorial Day weekend, and this is a tie I wear on Memorial Day and Veterans Day to thank and observe those veterans, men and women, who lost their lives in defense of our nation and of our freedoms. So, thank you to every veteran, past and present. Just know how much your dedication and your sacrifice has been appreciated. And that is it.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know about you, but when the team was here, I felt a little bit like I was in front of celebrities. I have watched them throughout this, this year, and Dr. Campbell and Mrs. Agel, they're so good about not telling anyone. I'd go over and I'd say, I just have to know, you know, what, what's next, and you're going to have to watch. So, I was just so happy to have them here tonight and to be celebrating. They really worked hard. So, I want to take the opportunity to thank the community. Last Friday, there was an early release in our school district, and that provided the time and opportunity for our staff to have required training. This time, we did some training around suicide prevention, which is a mandatory training through an RSA, and it was, as you can imagine, a very sensitive topic, and it's good to be together, to be able to be supported by school counselors and other wellness professionals when you're navigating such a training. So, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the community and to let you know that we'll continue to use the early releases next year in a similar way to provide that training as necessary. This is a really busy time of year, as Bill started to figure out. I, like, May sometimes would, it's called like mayhem in my house. I don't know about all of you, but it's every day you have something else, and it starts at 8:00 AM and goes until 7:00 PM or 8:00 PM, and it's a lot to celebrate. And so, I just want to acknowledge, you know, students and parents and families, board members, you know, I know we're all really busy right now doing the good work of the district, so I just want to acknowledge that. We will have more updates about summer programming. We are hiring some great staff. I'm really excited to bring forward some names tonight, and well on our way to prepare for next school year. So, we'll close up this school year strong and wish our seniors well, Chase, and the like, but we're already looking to how we can make the next school year the best one yet. Thank you.
Any comments from the board? All right, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Thank you very much. This past week, last week, we had our federal audit on all our entitlement funds, the financial piece. They went back and they audited all the, the ESER funds, which kind of brought me back to a period, period in history that I never want to go through again. Kind of realized that we had a donation of Wal, from Walmart of like 10,000 N95 masks towards the end of the pandemic, and I think we still have them in the bunker. But it was a lot of paperwork put together. I'd like to thank Sue Lors, Pearl Bratton, and Sarah Raffel for collecting all the AP paperwork, the payroll paperwork, and presenting it to the auditors and getting that done. This Friday, we also have another audit, audit. It's the preliminary audits for our fiscal year-end 2024 from our audit firm, Plaudtik and Sanderson. They're coming by to do a preliminary to get things going, and then the real audit will be sometime in, in August. So, that's about it. Not quite as exciting as everything else going on here, but who said finance is exciting? So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think audits probably are a little exciting or nerve-wracking.
Well, you should, my blood pressure at first, it was probably not in a good spot.
Any questions or comments from the board? All right, moving on to the school board update. Again, I want to congratulate the Granite State Challenge team. What an awesome opportunity for them to learn, to grow. It is nerve-wracking to be on TV, so that requires an additional learning experience and presence that they have mastered, as well as the knowledge, and what a wonderful trophy that is for the district. As Amy said, I want to echo the fact that there is a lot happening, and as parents, it could seem like you've got 52 activities per day that you have to track with your children. So, stay on top of those newsletters and announcements and those kinds of things, and really enjoy this time. I know, as a parent and a teacher, May is crazy, and the first part of June is just equally crazy, but it's also a wonderful time, and at least we have some beautiful sunshine on some of those days. For the board, the NHSBA has a call for resolutions with August 2nd as the deadline. This is an opportunity for us to draft any resolutions or concerns. At future meetings, we'll discuss the existing ones. You should have received an email today that has a link to the existing resolutions that will be up for a vote, vote on October 19th, and we'll discuss those. We, I look forward to our goals meeting in June. We are looking at potential other facilitators as Primex is moving away from goal-setting, and we're still working on that, so we will give you an update. Also, I've been working with the acting chair, Mackenzie Murphy of the Budget Committee, and the new chair of the Building and Planning Committee, Shane Albuquerque, to partner with them for this next year, looking for more cooperative effort in, on the budget and also our infrastructure needs. So, tonight we'll discuss part of that, and it's exciting to work with both of them. And lastly, as Bill said, I want to wish everyone, first of all, a restful weekend, but as a military, Air Force brat, Air Force wife, and Air Force mom, Air Force granddaughter, lots of uncles, also serving in the Navy and Army, and my son-in-law who serves in the Army, and my son who served in the Air Force, Memorial Day is a very solemn day for our family to remember those who lost their lives for the sake of our country and our freedoms. And I want to acknowledge all of those, those Gold Star families, as we approach this weekend, which often is a time of rest and barbecues and gardening, but most importantly, a time to remember those who've lost their lives. All right, any comments or questions? All right, moving on to our student representative update.
All right, thank you. As the board has said, it really has been quite the busy month so far, and we're planning on definitely keeping up that momentum, just looking at the amount of updates I have tonight, especially this morning. Many seniors were busy with the Senior Service Day. This is an annual MHS tradition where students, seniors at the high school offer three to three and a half hours of their day to basically give back to the community. So, for some students, this looks like yard work, planting, construction, et cetera, and students dedicate their time to give back to people in the community, especially elderly people. And this is really a great bonding event for students. It's a great way to show their support as they move on from the high school into the world. And just seeing the sheer amount of students that were signed up today for Senior Service Day, it was really great to know that we have that community support and that students are constantly showing that they're grateful to be a part of the Merrimack community. And that day also wrapped up with lunch and games at the American Legion, which was really fun. So, there was also a little bit of a break time after that for students, free food, free yard games, et cetera. So, that was a really great day for a lot of our seniors. Also, this past week has been pretty eventful. On this past Thursday, May 16th, the MHS Concert Band Jazz Band and Chorus performed a wonderful concert to wrap up the musical year. In attendance were faculty and staff, parents, students, and also many MHS alumni, which is really great to see past seniors, past MHS staff coming to support students once again, as they do for a lot of musical events. So, really great turnout and great job to all those that participated. Also, last Tuesday, the NHS National Honor Society at the high school participated in the annual watching of the Red Sox game. This is a fun event that NHS members look forward to with discounted tickets, and many students were excited to see the Red Sox win against the Tampa Bay Rays. That was a good day to be a New Hampshire baseball fan. And also tomorrow, on Tuesday, in May 21st, NHS seniors are going to be participating in the annual Teddy Bear Picnic. So, this is a day of fun and bonding outside with seniors, having the opportunity to visit elementary schools in Merrimack to share day of connecting with young Merrimack students. So, we're inviting students to be bussed out to Thornton's Ferry, Reed's Ferry, and the Merrimack Elementary Schools to connect with younger students and also visit older teachers for a day of games and lunch. So, we're really looking forward to that. Also, Student Council two weeks ago held the junior class prom, which was Firefly Bay themed, which was really exciting at the Doubletree in Merrimack. And so, I wanted to extend a congratulations to all those on the prom court especially, and the junior class for holding such an amazing event, and especially Luca Kavel and Maeve LaRocque, which were the prom king and queen respectively for this year. So, congratulations again to Luca and Maeve. It's really exciting. And we also have a very busy spring season wrap-up for sports. So, as the season ends, Merrimack Athletics have been staying busy with nights, games, and tournaments on the calendar. So, for baseball and softball, they have qualified for the postseason with the good final week that could potentially host both home games. For the baseball senior night on Wednesday 22nd, and softball senior night is on Friday the 24th. For tennis, Katie Costa finished the regular season with a 12-2 record and will enter the singles tournament as one of the top candidates. In doubles, Katie teamed up with Jess Harden to finish the regular season at 8-3, and she is also qualified for the doubles tournament. It's really exciting. In boys lacrosse, the team is on the cusp of qualifying for the postseason tournament and has two home matches this week, and their senior night is going to be on Friday the 24th. The girls lacrosse team, the senior night is on Thursday, the 23rd, and that's going to be with a game against Nashua South at 3:30 PM. For unified track and field, they have their last meet on the regular season this Wednesday before they go to Alveron High School for the state track meet on May 28th at 4:00. And then finally, for track and field, many athletes from both boys and girls have qualified for the state meet, which is going to be held this weekend at Portsmouth High School. So, again, as always, great job to all our Merrimack athletes. We're excited to see what you do in the next upcoming games and hopefully have a good rest of the spring season. And then finally, for all MHS students, this Wednesday, MHS is going to be participating in the Mock Crash Demonstration, which is an MHS tradition that educates students about the dangers of distracted or impaired driving. And then finally, at the end of the week, to wrap all of this up, we're going to have the Third Annual Field Day for MHS, which is going to be on Thursday afternoon. And then that night, the Top 10 Dinner is going to be held at the Merrimack Rotary Club for the 10 MHS students graduating top in their class. So, we look forward to all of the great events planned, and as always, I want to extend congratulations to our amazing Granite State Challenge team, our amazing Merrimack musicians, and of course, our amazing Merrimack athletes.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from the board? It is an awesome update.
Thank you. Got a lot going on this month.
And a lot of amazing talent across the board. All right, moving on to old business, strategic plan update.
Well, I've mentioned several times that we are making good progress, and we are. We actually have part of the strategic plan constructed here. We anticipate finishing or having our final meeting on March 29th, and then sometime in June, we will be presenting to you the strategic plan. We want to review it with the leadership team first before we present it to you. We have, we have drafted initiatives, strategic initiatives in six areas. That's curriculum instruction and assessment, facilities, cultural wellness, family and community engagement, vision of a learner and vision of a graduate. So, that we have spent a lot of time in reflecting on where we are and where we need to go, focusing on those six particular areas. Team of, what was the name, about 25, 26 people, and you know, the team has stayed quite strong. We've been meeting for about eight, eight months now, and we interrupted by a couple of times by weather, but other than that, the team is still quite enthusiastic. Chase is one of the members, and along with Matthew, Matthew Brown, and they've done an outstanding job working along with us. Naomi is, is a member of the team also. So, there is the end in sight here. We need to add some student pictures, and we need to just kind of jazz it and spiff it up a little bit, to use kind of an old term, and we want to make it as readable as possible and as, as attractive as possible in terms of making a statement to the community, making a statement to the, to the staff of where we are in terms of a proud past and an exciting future. And so, look for it in, in June.
Comments or questions? All right, moving on to new business. We have the privilege tonight to hear from a scout on building a Gaga ball pit at Reed's Ferry Elementary. So, I'm going to invite you to come up to the desk up here. Please introduce yourself and tell us about your project. Push the, you'll have to turn your mic on, and you'll know that there's a green button.
Is that good?
Yes.
All right. My name is Leeny Hadad. I'm a life scout in Troop 15G here in Merrimack in Scouts BSA, and I also attended Reed's Ferry Elementary, so I'm really excited to give back to my alma mater, if you will, and I have a little presentation here.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Rochford. I'm one of the committee members for Troop 15 and 15G. Tonight, I'm here in my capacity as Eagle Advisor to Leeny.
All right. So, I'm not sure how easy it will be for you guys to see it, but there is a presentation. Okay, perfect. All right. So, as like I said, my name's Leeny. I'm a life scout in Troop 15G, and I'm presenting to make a new Gaga ball pit at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. So, the proposed project for my Eagle Scout project is a Gaga ball pit at Reed's Ferry. It will be completed on the North Playground, and it will not be, need leveling of the ground, but I will be putting in a ground material, which will be sand, and it can be refilled with the safety fiber that is also used on the North Playground when it's necessary. This is a picture of the location. So, as you see, when you drive in lines road, the school's right in front of you, and if you look to the left, you'll see the North Playground, and it will be placed in one of the far corners of the playground, so pretty nearby to the structures. In case you don't know, Gaga ball is a below-the-knees version of dodgeball. It's played in an octagonal pit, and players can only hit the ball once consecutively. So, it has to either hit the wall or another player before they're allowed to hit it again. If the ball goes out of the pit, the player that hit it last is out, and they have to go get the ball and then throw it back in. If a ball hits a player above the knees, that player's not out, but if that ball then bounces out, the person who originally hit it is out. Gameplay continues until one player remains or the ball leaves the pit, at which point someone will go retrieve it, throw it back in, and then the game continues. And then this is just a video of Gaga ball in action. I'm not sure if the embedded link will work, but I have it right over here. All players start with one hand touching the wall. The first person to enter the pit throws the ball in the air. Players yell Gaga ball as the ball bounces on the ground.
Once ball is shouted, everyone may leave the wall, and the game starts. When playing, players hit the ball with an open hand.
Players may not scoop or throw the ball.
Players hit the ball once unless it hits the wall or another player.
If the ball hits a person below the knee, even off another person or wall, the person is out.
If a player hits the ball twice in a row, then they are out.
If a player hits the ball with two hands, they are out.
If a player hits the ball out of the pit, then they are out.
Players cannot use the wall to protect themselves.
When there are three players left, players may hit the ball up to three times in a row.
My mic was not on. I'm sorry. All right. So, now we have benefits of Gaga ball pit. So, it encourages healthy competition because while it is a competitive game, it's also good for kids to have that competitiveness and have fun doing it. It also will be inclusive and accessible, as I will later touch on, that I am going to be installing an ADA accessible doorway, so it will be wheelchair accessible. There's freedom and creativity to create new rules, like when someone wins, they get to add a new rule or adding twists that are agreed up, agreed upon by all players. And it's also exercise for students, keeping them active while they're also having fun. And last point, it's a very fun game. All right. So, this is the accessibility, the accessible door I was just talking about. It will be installed between, on one side of the octagon, the slabs- The slabs will be cut and then the doorway will be installed there. This way, wheelchair-bound students will be able to access the pit and play Gaga ball with their peers. The Gaga ball pit will be 30 inches tall, and it will be comprised of 24 2x10 inch by 10 feet boards. Area of the pit will be just about 480 square feet. The process of building the Gaga ball pit will be as follows. So I will purchase the kit online, it will be delivered to me, and then I will acquire the wood and resize it based on instructions I receive with the kits of both the door and the brackets of the pit. Then I will prepare the ground material, which will be sand donated by Lakeview Landscape, a landscaping company here in Merrimack, will be donating the sand for free because it is a service project. Then I will bring the supplies and the materials to the site at North Playground. I will assemble the pit onsite and then fill it with the ground material and then level it. I, with help from my troop and my family, will be raising my own funds for this project. Mrs. Painshow has offered to aid in this process by publicizing my fundraisers on her newsletter for Reed's Ferry Elementary. Some fundraisers I hope to do are meatball subnights for a local church and car washes at a local gas station. My cost estimate is about $1,675. My ideal start date for this is June 14th, which also happens to be the last day of school, and my ideal finish date for the project is July 14th. The construction itself will be completed towards the end of this timeframe, around July 14th, and it will hopefully be completed in one workday, which will be about eight hours, split up into shifts for my volunteers, but depending on manpower, it will be either longer or shorter depending on how many volunteers I get. And these volunteers will be from my troop and my family. I will lead them by delegating and assisting with whatever questions or help they need. And in order to minimize danger to students and staff, this work will be done on a weekend day, either Saturday or Sunday, so no students or staff are onsite, and depending on how much we get done in one day, it might become a two-day project, but ideally, it will be complete in one day. That is it.
Wonderful, that's a great presentation, and my kids love Gaga ball pits. And it's a lot safer than when we grew up playing dodgeball. I want to, I want to open it up to questions.
I appreciate the description of Gaga ball because I've seen those things and I don't know what those are. I have a 10-year-old son, I have no idea what that thing is. So I really appreciate you describing what the game was because I had no clue, so thank you.
And I just want to say, thank you, you did a wonderful presentation, and we really appreciate you giving back to the school. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I just want to say, I'm a teacher that spends two hours at Reed's Duty every day with second through fifth graders, and I can tell you, there's no school that wouldn't want this because the kids love Gaga ball. We don't have a Gaga ball pit, but if we did, the kids would go Gaga for it. I'm embarrassed I just said that, but whatever. They would love it, they would absolutely love it, so I think it's a great idea, and thank you so much.
I was going to say, your presentation was so thorough that I don't actually have any questions. I was on my daughter's field trip today, and there was a Gaga ball pit at the place where the field trip was, and her whole second grade class was like so disappointed that we weren't going to have time to play Gaga ball. So Gaga ball is a big deal.
Yeah, just one, just because I don't, I know so little about it. What is the, once the project is complete, what's the upkeep like for something like this? Is that like, does the sand need to be replaced? Again, just because I have no idea what.
So the wood is pressure-treated, so the wood won't need any treatment, and the pit will need to be refilled occasionally, but it doesn't need to be the same material, so it will be refilled when the playground is replenished with safety fibers.
So I do have a question. Have you coordinated with Mr. Tussaud and Mr. Chevanel? They're kind of the grounds people.
Yeah, they gave me two options for locations and did say, mention that they were hoping to install a new structure on the playground. So they said that that would get first dibs on location and I would get the second location.
Great.
May I ask a question? Leeny, to whom do we make a check out for a donation?
Troop 15G.
To Troop 15G of Merrimack.
Say that again, please?
Troop 15G of Merrimack.
Okay.
Just Troop 15G is sufficient.
And I have to say, just from listening to you, looking at the presentation, you are going to be one of life's great leaders.
Thank you, that means a lot.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. It was a great presentation, and I think it's going to be a wonderful experience and a long-term benefit to the school. So thank you again for giving back to the school you grew up in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, thank you for coming, we appreciate it. All right, now we're going to move on to a presentation by the Merrimack Village District regarding low-salt use on Continental Boulevard. So I want to invite you to come on up. That is very good timing. If you close the presentation, you'll see it on the desktop. Close that YouTube as well. There it is. Sorry.
Okay. There you go. Just trying to find something I can point with here on this, on this computer. I don't see a pointer. You can see my, you can see my arrow, I guess.
Yes, we can.
All right, I'll use that. Well, thank you for letting me come today to speak to you. This is a very, very, very important topic that we've been discussing with the town and with the DOT and so forth. We are in a position, or the MVD is in a position where salt use has been an issue, a major problem for their drinking water supplies. And what I want to do today is just give you a 10 to 12-minute primer on why, what the issue is, why it's important, and why we need the school board's cooperation. The bottom line is, we have to reduce salt use in Merrimack. That's, that's what has to happen. And I'm going to go to PowerPoint so you can see this, I think it'll be a little better. There you go. So Merrimack is served by a series of wells. It's one of the few towns in the state that is strictly groundwater. All wells, no surface water. City of Dover is very similar to that, Plymouth is similar to that. But there's a number of towns that combine their groundwater use with surface water. Portsmouth combines surface water and groundwater. But in Merrimack, you're completely dependent on these wells. And the wells are four or five in the north. This is, the blue area is what we consider to be the recharge areas to these wellfields. This shows well MVD 2 and MVD 3, and there's a new well in between called MVD 9, I'll talk a little bit about it. And then the southern part, actually two wells in the town of Hollis that serve the town of Merrimack. And there are wells MVD 7 and 8. And well 6, as you may recall, was taken offline due to contamination from the metals, Merrimack metals. In the, 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 the part we're going to be focusing on today is the area of the Natta Cook Brook Aquifer. And I just want to point out that this area where I'm circling is where one of your school properties exists right now. It is straddling the wellhead protection area. This is the boundary of the wellhead protection area so that every water drop that falls inside that blue area ultimately goes into the wells and the drinking water that you, you know, consume. This conversation is going to go on with a grant that we're talking about with the DES and EPA, but this area I just want you to focus on. This is the Natta Cook Lake, Greens Pond, this is the well 3, this is well 9 and well, and the well 2. So well 3, if I go back to well 3 just for a moment. Well 3 is just downgrading of this interchange between Camp Sergeant Road and essentially Industrial Boulevard. The well has been monitored for sodium and chloride since 1992. You'll see this graph that shows that over the course of the last 30 years, right between 1992 and 2011, chloride increased at about 10 milligrams per liter each year, and sodium increased about 4 milligrams per liter. This is the box up in the left-hand corner here. Now I've lost my cursor now. Since 2011 to April 2022, you'll see that this graph in the curve starts to sharpen intensely, right? We've now doubled chloride increases from 10 milligrams per liter to 22 milligrams per liter, and the sodium has gone from 3.83 milligrams per liter to almost 8. So again, the sodium has doubled. And where has this come from? There's only one real source, and that's salting of the roads, right? So it's something that is easily re-fixed, not easily fixed, but can be fixed in a matter of years. But I, I think it's kind of scary when you look at these numbers that in the well MVD 3, that the sodium increased 1,000% and chloride nearly 1,000%. But also in our other wells, we see sodium increasing at 230%, 320 for chloride, and MVD 5, 285% and almost 600%. So it's not just the Natta Cook Brook watershed that's being impacted, it's other areas as well. Our focus right now is on the Natta Cook Brook Aquifer. Now, how do you know when there's too much salt? Well, if you step on a salt, if you step on a parking lot and the salt goes crunch underneath you, it's too much salt. It's not being applied properly. Salt drifts should never occur because that means the storm has gone by, and this picture is one of the Merrimack parking lots. The storm's gone by, and what's left? The salt. And that salt just gets run off into the, into the, in the aquifer and into the environment, and impacts surface water, wetlands, and of course, the drinking water supplies. So we can't get away from this, this salt drift problem. And how do we get to that point? Well, ultimately, it's everybody's responsibility to start changing the culture of salt use in this town. Now I've presented this to the city, to the town council. We presented this to DES and it's been presented to EPA. And the easy answer is, we've got to reduce the salt use. And how do we do that? We've got to move towards using brine. Brine is a liquid measure of salt. It uses about 80% less salt than rock salt that's applied to it. That's a big change. This sounds kind of common sense, but we got to get away from de-icing. Because when we're de-icing, the horse is already out of the barn, right? We got to anti-ice, we got to prevent the ice from forming. Instead of letting the ice form and then trying to melt it with salt and taking it off, we got to prevent it from happening. And brine, interestingly enough, can be applied prior to the storm. It adheres into the asphalt porous spaces. It gets released at the time when it starts to get moisture on top of it from rain or sleet or snow. And many areas, particularly in like Long Island, Nantucket, Cape Cod, Martha's Vineyard, where they depend entirely on groundwater resources, that's what they use almost exclusively, is brine. They don't use rock salt because of its contamination issues. Calibration of the salt application has to be done. What happens oftentimes is that the plower, the person who's plowing has been taught by the person who plowed before them that as long as you see salt on the road, it's okay, everybody's going to be fine. Well, that can't happen, and so that the process of calibrating all this equipment is necessary. There is a program with the state, Snow Pro. We got to train every single operator that dumps snow, you know, salt on the ground, and that's being done. That's, it's being processed, but it's an education program that we've got to continue to support. And I'm hoping that the, you know, as we move forward with the school board, that you're also taking a part of this team effort to try to change the use of cul, you know, the culture of salt use. One of the things we're here tonight is to have you sign an agreement with the DOT for them to be able to use limited salt at the interchange of Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that now, and some of the data you're going to see will, should scare you. Why is this important in Merrimack? Well, this is hard to imagine. Everybody's heard about PFOS in Merrimack. They put treatment plans, spent over $20 million on PFOS removal. The treatment costs to remove salt out of drinking water far exceeds PFOS treatment. It far exceeds 1,4 dioxide. It far exceeds VOCs or chemical spills, gasoline spills, diesel spills. It far exceeds iron and manganese and all of them. And you could take all those contaminants combined, and salt would still be more expensive to take out. And that's one of the reasons why we don't have desalination plants in California. It's why we don't have desalination plants, most places in the United States. It's just the energy costs are too great. So the MVD has lost their well number 3. And to give that perspective, well 3 produced 1,000 gallons a minute. That's 1.5 million gallons a day that they lost as an asset because of the road salting in this particular area and in the watershed. And it's cost the MVD $2 million to replace that well. And as I mentioned, we have other additional production wells being threatened by the salt loads. So what is MVD doing? They developed a stakeholders group that has now consisted of DES, DOT, MVD, town of Merrimack, local residents, and many business owners. We've had five meetings so far, and I would encourage anybody on the school board who wants to be a part of the stakeholders meeting, we would invite you and welcome you aboard. We've had about 20 to 25 people in attendance every time. The MVD has installed probably, I think, over 30 monitoring wells around their wellfields, and they're monitoring salt loads that are coming in so we can actually measure things happening on a monthly, daily basis, and of course, an annual basis. As you've probably noticed, we've installed these signs that identify the recharge boundaries. So when you drive into a sign that says WAPA, Wellhead Protection Area, you're driving into the area that's recharging the wells and the drinking water that's being consumed. And also, they've obtained this $100,000 watershed restoration grant that's about to get started, that's being supported by EPA and DES, that will give them kind of a head start and a little, and I'll talk a little bit more about it, but it's a, it's a grant that is going to bring in both state and federal support to get this salt reduced. You've, you've seen this, this is where the WAPA signs are. I think there's a, there's over 30 of them in total, but this is some of the key areas that have been identified where signs exist. So when you drive down, you'll see, you know, that you're entering into the, in the wellhead protection area. Now the salt grant that we just mentioned will be a proactive way to move the dial fast forward to cause the use of salt to be reduced. And what they're expecting us to do is come up with a salt reduction plan that will bring us to a level that we will start seeing the curves of the salt. You know, you saw that increase over the last 32 years, is to change that curve downward. So in order to do that, we've got to establish a salt loading goal for the district wellhead protection areas, determine the salt reduction necessary to get to that goal, and then prepare this salt reduction plan that everybody will end up signing onto. And school be asked to be a part of that at some point, the town, of course, will, Public Works is, and many others. Also, the police department, because it takes everybody to be on board with this salt reduction process. It can't just cherry pick one organization versus another. This map shows quite quickly, all those areas in yellow are areas that have salt applied to them. Includes storm drain, parking lots, and of course, the state roads and residential developments to a certain extent. I just want to highlight this area just real quickly, is that this is well 3 that was taken offline, and this is the interchange between Industrial Boulevard and Continental, Industrial Drive and Continental Boulevard. The water, the WAPA actually is at the midpoint here on Industrial Boulevard and incorporates a lot of these parking lots that Fidelity has and others, and then of course, all these parking areas and industrial activities up in the northern part of the watershed. All of these darker areas are, are, have impervious cover that are salted. So we're working with, trying to identify and push hard to get everybody in the WAPA to reduce their salt use. But tonight, we're focused on this interchange and this area that's going to be salted, which would impact the school or potentially buses and so forth that come in. These are the areas that we're monitoring on a continuous basis, and I just wanted to show you, these are- to show you, these are, these circled areas have what we call conductivity meters in them. So we're actually monitoring conductivity as a measure, can be converted into chloride. And so we can measure the amount of sodium that's coming in. So when we are negotiating with DOT and others to say, yes, we're reducing salt, we can actually see if we're having a change, if we're actually making a difference. So that there's not just a verbal and a written agreement that they're going to use salt in this particular area, but we're going to actually see the results of it because we've got the station set up. Now, this graph is frightening. This shows you, the blue is the chloride, the average chloride taken four times in a year since 2013. And you can see it's been up and down and so forth, but from 2021 to 2023, chlorides in this well, DD1, and I'll just back up real quick, in this, this well right here where I've got my arrow, right, has reached 1,200. Now, this is a average of four measurements with a high of 1,200 milligrams per liter. You can see that sodium here has risen up to over 600. Now, just to give you a perspective, your drinking water should have no more than 40 milligrams per liter of sodium. So when you're talking about 600 being injected into the aquifer system, it indicates that we're going in the wrong direction. The other two wells are shown here where the chloride is and the sodium are increasing. The crazy part about this is this is something we're doing to ourselves. Salt is corrosive to your cars and your bridges and all the infrastructure. It's detrimental to fish, it's detrimental to wetlands and the bioenvironment, and it's absolutely detrimental to drinking water. And it's just something we continue to add. And so there's going to be, in order for us to reduce salt, we've got to get away from the standpoint of we're going to just put as much salt as possible in every parking lot and everybody else, and on the roads so that everybody has, you know, we, we overcompensate for potential safety. It's been demonstrate, demonstrated clearly, you can be safe by using other products, by using brine, by using it effectively, by using a pre and anti-icing approach as opposed to de-icing approach. And so that's what we're pleading with you all, is to help support this process. Now, this is other, these are other monitoring locations that we're, we're taking into account here so we can monitor the impacts of salting on these parking areas. It's not just, we're not trying to cherry pick with just the DOT either, because they're part of it, but there's Public Works in town, there's all these businesses and industries that use salt. And we've actually started moving with their contractors to say, we've got to change the direction here, we cannot use rock salt anymore. And ironically, rock salt is so expensive that it, there's an financial incentive for people to use brine. It's cheaper, it lasts longer, it's, it's more effective at some of these temperatures. Now, if it gets down below five degrees, then there's going to be a need for rock salt and sometimes exclusively. But as climate change occurs, we're now moving into the sweet spot of brine, which is that 25 degrees, you know, 20 degrees to 32, 33, we're having that mix. And, and the ability for anti-icing to occur is strengthened and increased. So the action items here are to continue with the stakeholders meetings, to educate everybody in this area, obtain all the salt load data from the stakeholders, including all the parking areas in the WAPA, to begin the work on the grant after this strategic, there's a planning, plan that has to be approved by EPA, which it should be approved in the next month. We need the agreement to be signed in support of the DOT using limited salt in the interchange of Continental Boulevard and the Industrial Drive. The town council has already approved that unanimously in support, and we're hoping that you can take a vote to the same. And then we've just got to stop using as much salt as we are. I mean, that, it's, it's a mass balance. So for those mathematicians, I mean, what you put in is what, you know, it will come out, and as soon as we stop putting in as much, we'll see less, and it will flush out of the system. It's kind of like your bloodstream a lot of times. When we put toxins in our bloodstream, eventually it flushes out through our kidneys and gets out of our system. Well, the nice thing about salt is that through the flow of the streams, through the pumping of the wells, we're actually pulling some of that salt out of that watershed. And if we can, if we stop putting in more than we're taking out, then that balance will go down and we'll see a reduction, and that curve that's going up will start moving down. And we've seen it in other communities. And that's, that's essentially it, in a nutshell. That's a lot, and I didn't, I kind of tried to keep it to a minimum so that you could see some of the alarm bells that are going off. And I've been talking about this, not just here, but in the Adirondacks and in the Lake George region and Lakes region in New Hampshire, because it's not just Merrimack that's dealing with this problem. It's the Seacoast is dealing with it, the I-93 corridor is dealing with it. There are a lot of communities that are suffering, and they don't have an option, and the treatment costs are just excessive, so. Take any questions you might have?
Questions from the board?
Yeah, oh, thank you. I didn't know any of that was, was happening. So we've been using salt forever, as far as I know. Why, in the last 30 years, are we seeing such a spike?
Yeah, so I think part of it is that we've gone, you used to be able to drive in snow, right? And people wouldn't oversalt, even if it snowed, you stayed home, you know? Now, everybody needs to be everywhere all the time, and so the roads have been plowed more, they've been salted more. I mean, I grew up in Watertown, New York, which is in the St. Lawrence Seaway, where we're in the snow belt. People didn't salt, they only plowed. And if it was too much snow, you stayed home, right? And that's not the case anymore. So as time has gone on, people, and there's more conveniences and, and there's this demand to have a black road, in other words, clear road all the time, there's just been more and more salt used.
So just an expectation from society to just get it done faster?
Yeah.
Interesting.
So on the letter, is this a request to DOT or is this a partnership?
This is a, this is a signed agreement that says you will, you're accepting them to use limited salt in that region. The partnership would probably come in the stakeholders meetings where you could actually participate, ask questions, you know, with the DOT, because they do, they do attend. And we have been now getting the assistant commissioner of the DOT attending these meetings, which is, you know, is a first. And a number of his folks who run the salt program, particularly in the, in the Merrimack region.
And I noticed on the map, because it's, it's just in, since the construction of the slate site, have you worked with that developer on their current situation and parking lots, and then what they're developing as well to be low salt?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, they, they actually have a no-salt restriction on their, on their property.
That's great, that's great. Lori?
So I just, so thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it. I'm just trying to understand, I know like Continental Boulevard, the state just tried to give it back to the town, the town just went through major kind of war with the state on Continental Boulevard. So for me personally, I hope you're not, I'm not prepared to vote tonight because I think there's just so much more that I'd like to, to learn and know. I know that the town had gone away from using a lot of the sand to salt, and I think that's probably part of our issue because in the last few years, we've been using more salt and less sand. So I just would like to research a little bit more to have more information before I make a decision.
To address just the issue of the discussion between the state and the town, the state has struggled because of not having enough people to plow and to do their winter maintenance, had believed that it would be in their best interest if the town would take that over, that section over. Now, that has, there's some liability issues that the town didn't want to take on at that point, so that's one of the reasons that they chose not to do it. So the state has said, okay, we're going to continue on, but if we continue on and you want us to use less salt, then we need all the parties in the, in the town to support that. And that's why the town council, we presented first the town council.
And that's part of my whole thing, you know, understanding that there was just such a huge battle between the town and the state on Continental Boulevard, and understanding that the town did win, and because it would have cost the town something like 1.2 million dollars if we had to pick up Continental Boulevard at this point in time. So, but to also understand the DOE, to just get, I'd just like to hear all sides of the issue before we make a decision, that's just me.
So can I just ask, since the town council and the police and the fire department have already signed off on this, what other concerns might you have that they didn't address?
So for, for me, so I, less, less salt on school parking lots, I'd like to understand that from Matt's perspective, from Primex's perspective, you know, I just, I'd like to learn more about the agent that he's talking about to use. I, I just feel like, I just would like more information.
So the letter that they're asking us to sign is only related to the DOT use of low salt or limited salt on exit 10, from the exit 10 on-ramp from DW Highway South Mount onto Industrial Drive, continuing south on Continental Boulevard to the end where Continental meets Milford Road. So it's not, the agreement's not addressing our parking lots right now?
I understand that, but I still would like more time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Well, because we do have those questions and concerns, we will move this to our next board meeting to consider and put to a vote. But we thank you so much for your presentation. I do have one last question for you. For private residents, for example, I live, my driveway is a very steep, very long driveway. Part of it is shaded 90% of the time. My husband's really good about snow plowing as it happens, but you know, sometimes we get six inches, he's still at work.
Right.
What would you recommend for private homeowners to do?
So that you can get a brine, you can get a brine tank yourself and just spray the asphalt parking lot before the storm occurs, and then, and just follow up with that. That's, that's probably the most effective. There are, and I mean, sand is a, is an, is an option. It depends on where that sand's going to go. Sometimes that doesn't help all the problems, but it does, a lot of people will combine the brine with the sand.
And where would you purchase that?
So that we can give you, there's a bunch of places they can get it, yeah.
That would be great. I think, because we're making this a part of our school board meeting, I think a lot of us would like to know the personal side of it. Naomi?
What has your timeline been so far? When did you present to all of these other groups who have signed already?
In the last two months, in the last, well, 60, within the last maybe 45 days. I'm not exactly sure.
I was going to see if I had a date on that one.
I think it was within six weeks.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to say, to sign it today, and I just wanted to make sure that us postponing till our next meeting will not cause you undue hardship in getting the work done that you need to get done.
No, because we're, we're not in the, we're past the point of plowing this year and salting, so we could, we could wait. But I, here's the thing, the longer we wait and the less support that we give to DOT, the more this becomes a cloudy issue. And I think that the, the strength of agreement within the community is really important because of my message to DOT is, you know, our message, our town's message to be, we're all in on this, we get it, you know? We don't need any more alarm bells, we don't need to lose another well, you know, to, to chloride, something we control.
Well, we will put it to a vote at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, yes. I'll escape out of there, and, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you again. All right. I just wanted to make one last comment. We have heard a lot about PFAS and the incredible pollution that has been done to our waters and the amount of money MVD has spent, and it's, it's a very, very serious matter to keep our drinking water as healthy as possible here in Merrimack. All right, moving on to a new piece of new business, I want to thank Board Member Rothaus for her attendance at the latest Planning and Building Committee meeting and drafting this letter with me. They have requested a charge for their work this year, and so I'm just going to read this. You have a copy, I have a couple edits, and then we'll vote on anything, if we want to change anything, add anything, and vote on this as a charge, and then I will present it Wednesday night at their meeting. "In a spirit of cooperation and the mutual goal of seeing the district provide the most effective and efficient infrastructure for the benefit of students and employees, the Merrimack School Board presents the 2024-2025 Charge to the MSD Planning and Building Committee. Just as all the members of the Merrimack School Board have done, we are asking all elected officials for the MSD Planning and Building Committee to sign an ethics agreement and be held accountable to the expectations. We are asking the Planning and Building Committee to meet minimally on a monthly basis and other meetings as required. In the hope of building trust with the community and because of the importance of getting the information out to the public on the new SAU plans, we think it would be best if the meetings were in the memorial room and televised by Merrimack TV. This allows for active town participation at meetings and better communication. Merrimack TV has agreed and is available for televising the meetings from the memorial room on Wednesday nights. The committee will participate and learn all aspects of the new central office building plan and collaborate with administration and the school board for a long-term solution. The Planning and Building Committee will be responsible for updating all information regarding all previously explored alternative options. The committee will provide a detailed cost analysis, the final bid for the public to understand the cost of construction, ADA compliance, privacy laws, as well as commercial construction constraints. The committee will take a formal vote on accepting the proposed plan. The committee is responsible for setting up an ad hoc committee to support the communication and the visualization of the central office building for all stakeholders. The committee will work with the school board for public viewings of the plan and presentations at school board meetings. In addition to the work on the SAU central office building, the committee will update and communicate the capital improvement plan in collaboration with administration and the school board. The committee will make a formal vote on the CIP. A member of the Planning and Building Committee will collaborate with the Athletic Advisory Committee for discussions regarding fields and facilities. We appreciate the members of the Planning and Building Committee and their work for the betterment of the district." Comments or questions? Jenna?
So thank you for adding the part about Merrimack TV agreeing to, to do this. Merrimack TV, Nick Lavalley and his team are amazing. They do so much work making sure that the town of Merrimack has access to not only the fun stuff like sports, but to local government meetings so that people can be informed and can choose to get all of the information they need. When I called them and I said, hey, you know, we're, we're trying to solve this problem with the SAU, and people are asking for transparency, and they're asking for information. And I know as someone who was running for reelection, we kept hearing transparency, transparency, transparency. And I said, it was shocking to me actually to find out that the, the meetings are not televised. So when we called Merrimack TV, you know, Nick said, yeah, I, I think we can do it. I mean, he, he asked his team and, and pretty quickly stepped up to say, oh yeah, we can make that happen, which I love that they did that because people want to know what is being discussed, and, and has this been discussed and has that been discussed? And the only way we can really provide the most transparency is if those meetings are televised. So first of all, thank you to Merrimack TV for accommodating that. They said it would be a little tricky, but if we, if they could move to the memorial room, that would make it possible. And I just want to say, this is a great time to just say thank you to Merrimack TV for all that they do, for the board, that, you know, they're always here, you know, for our board meetings, for the budget committee meetings, so that the town, when the town's, you know, says, you know, I didn't know that was happening, all of these meetings are televised so that people can watch them and be involved and be informed. So thank you for including that, and thank you to Merrimack TV for stepping up that way.
Any other comments? Then I will entertain a motion to accept this charge as read into the record.
I will make a motion that we accept that charge as read.
Motion made by Jenna Harding, Hardy?
I will second.
Seconded by Ken Martin, all those in favor? 500. Thank you. And Lori and I will be there Wednesday night. All right.
Lori, one, sorry, one quick, I just had a quick point of order question. Going way back to our scout project, was that something we needed to vote on, or is that something we just give a thumbs up to? It's been kind of eaten at me since we moved on.
We should take a vote, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, because when they present to Parks and Rec, they, they always take a vote at Parks and Rec.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept the scout So I'll entertain a motion to accept the Scout proposal to build a Gaga ball pit at Reed's Ferry Elementary.
I second it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, moved by Ken Martin, seconded by Lori Rothaus, all those in favor? Aye, five zero zero. Our enthusiasm for it outweighed our need to vote.
Yeah, so, thank you.
All right, moving on to the approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I would be happy to make a motion that we accept the May sixth minutes.
I found one tiny typo.
Okay.
Line nineteen, it should say called the meeting to order.
So, you want to edit, amend your motion?
I amend my motion to say I make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended. I will second that.
All right, motion made by Jenna Hardy, seconded by Naomi Halter, all those in favor? Say aye. Aye, five zero zero. It was not on our agenda, but we do have non-public minutes for May sixth, 2024, and I'll entertain a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes for May sixth, 2024.
Moved by Ken Martin, seconded. Seconded by Naomi Halter, all those in favor? Aye, five zero zero. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda.
There are a collection of both resignations and nominations in your packet tonight. We'll start with the resignations. Tonight, we're bringing forth resignations from Emily Sousa, art teacher at Merrimack High School, Mike Shaughnessy, videography teacher at Merrimack High School, Joanne DiBello, special education coordinator, and Adam Perkins, elementary teacher at Jamies. We also are bringing forth some nominations. Julie Coria becomes an elementary education teacher at James Master Cola Upper Elementary. Deanna Lavoy, physical education teacher at Reed's Ferry. Keith Jones, special education coordinator for Merrimack High School. Heather Demers, elementary classroom teacher at Reed's Ferry. Leanna Avery, special education teacher at Master Cola Elementary School. And Tiffany Lopez-Carazana, elementary classroom teacher at Reed's Ferry.
All right, so I do have a quick question. When we have someone transferring from another state with their credential, what is the timeframe for that transfer? How does NHDOE?
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, the DOE works on their own timeline. I'm not sure who has set it up for them, I'm not sure they're open to feedback either, so. I will just say that both of these people, I've talked to them, I've sent them the links, we've put in, helped us tickets, we've moved it along. So, we are, you know, we're sure that we're going to do our end to make sure that they're in the system. I'm not giving you an answer, and I'm sorry about that, but we're going to try really hard. But we do know that both of the people that are coming from out of state are licensed in the state that they're in. So some of them have reciprocal licenses. Julie's coming from Florida, which does not, so there'll be some additional hoops for her to jump through, but they're actively working to secure them.
Any other questions from the board? So I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Made by Ken Martin, seconded by Jenna Hardy, all those in favor say aye. Aye, five zero zero.
May I just say, Lori, quickly, thank you again to you for the collective bargaining agreement, which has paid great dividends the last two years. The quality of applicants has been extraordinary in the last year and this year, and I attribute that to a more competitive salary, making us more competitive with regional schools, that we were not in the same arena prior to that collective bargaining agreement. So, thank you to you, and thank you to the voters for, for that endorsement.
Can I just?
Lori?
And I agree, because when we used to come to the school board meetings, and it would be who is leaving the district, it would take fifteen minutes to read everybody's name, and we were just a training ground. People would come here for one or two years, get experience, and then move on to a town that paid more. So, this has been a very positive change for Merrimack.
All right, moving on to committee reports. Lori, I know you have a committee report.
Okay, mine's easy, mine's quick. I, I was able to finally visit my friends on the Professional Development Committee once again. They're in the process of wrapping up the school year, kind of finalizing and voting on various professional development activities for the staff, lots of great programs and initiatives that they're undertaking, and so they're kind of, like I said, wrapping things up for the, for the summer, and then, I think we have one more meeting? Yeah, one more meeting, and then we'll meet again in the fall.
Naomi?
I have another quick, easy one, because I don't need to say anything about it, because Bill already talked about it at the beginning of the meeting, but in the interest of transparency, I attended a Strategic Planning Committee meeting.
So the Parks and Rec Committee meeting was canceled for the fifteenth, but I did attend the Planning and Building Committee reorganization meeting. Shane Albuquerque is the new chair, Gage Perry is the vice chair, Finley Rothaus is the secretary. There was a deep discussion on the proposed SAU building. I think it's really important that we clarify, at the meeting on Wednesday, we clarify the meeting minutes and the intent, and maybe work at having the meeting minutes closer to what happens at a school board meeting, like, you know, Mrs. Rothaus, you know, made this motion, you know, who said what? And, so, so I think that, that this new, that our charge to give them the charge, and have them have a real focus this year will really help. I do think that it will be a really positive change if we can go to the Memorial Room and have the, all of those meetings televised, especially in a year that we are going to come back with a SAU building, it's, it's a critical need for us, so I am positive and hopeful on that.
Thank you. All right, moving on to correspondence. I had several about graduation, I've had a number of correspondence, again, as I stated earlier, with the acting chair of the Budget Committee and the new chair of Planning and Building. I had a concerned parent regarding a flyer at the high school, and I directed them to how those work in clubs, et cetera. And I had one other correspondent, actually, I had several regarding our MVD water presentation, and that is a great group of people that have been corresponding.
And I had a former student reach out to me, her brother, also a Merrimack High School graduate, is, he is the doctor for the Olympics, or one of them, he just received, his name is Tad Kremen, he just received a huge grant, he works for UCLA, and it's, I will send the article to everyone, but when we think about our graduates, and what they're doing in the world, and how they leave Merrimack High School, and all the positive things that are really happening, I was really excited to, to get that information, and I will share it with everyone, because it's very exciting for, for Tad. And his father, actually, was the tennis coach at Merrimack, he taught in Nashua, so it's, and I think Mrs. Kremen still lives at Merrimack, so there we go.
I'd also like to add to that, I read the article about the grant, it is focused on osteoarthritis. So if you are over the age of forty, and especially if you played sports, you most likely have osteoarthritis in your knees. And the interesting thing about the article has been, and rightfully so, a major, major emphasis in medical research on rheumatoid arthritis as an autoimmune disease, but osteoarthritis is deterioration from use and age, and it makes, like, when you're over fifty, doing lunges nearly impossible, things like that. And so his grant and his team is working on solutions to reverse osteoarthritis, which I think is fascinating. Great for Merrimack alone. All right, comments from the board? Lori?
So, my comment is, first of all, on the presentation, it wasn't that I didn't disagree or agree with the presentation, I just think for us, for best practice, when we have a presentation, that we take it under advisement, so we have enough time to go back and just make, check our research, make sure, so that's, for me, it was just a protocol, not that I was against the presentation. And also, I just wanted to say that a former athletic director from Merrimack High School, Joe Raykraft, was honored tonight. He was honored for his, all his work with athletics, and he taught at Merrimack High School as a business teacher, athletic director, coach of both football and girls softball, so he did both, and it was a great resignation, I would have loved to be there for him, but he was a wonderful person and a wonderful coach in our district, so congratulations to him.
And I just wanted to send my congratulations. I was present for the Merrimack High School final concert last week on Thursday, the Spring Concert, which was absolutely incredible, if any of you were able to attend, watching the world premiere of that piece, which very few high schools in New Hampshire would be able to pull that piece off. It was incredibly challenging and demanding, and the energy was there, you could tell the kids and, and all the teachers involved were so invested in that. It was really cool to watch, and again, the choir sounded great, jazz band sounded great, in spite of performing in a gym, which I will always throw that dig in there. But it was just an incredible year, or an incredible performance to see, and those students should be very proud of that performance, because it was outstanding.
All right. Well, with that, we will move on to public comments on agenda items, so if you would like to speak on an agenda item, you are welcome to come to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you're a student, you do not need to state your address.
I think this is on, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Shannon Brands, I live at One Blair Road. I'm really excited about the Merrimack TV channel going about and allowing the viewers at home to, to see and hear what's going on for the SAU building. I think that's going to have a real positive stride here in Merrimack. I'm really excited, because it's my alma mater, Reed's Ferry School, and my kids went there, and I worked there as a para for seven years, so I'm really excited, Laney, about that Gaga pit. It sounds incredible, and the kids are really going to enjoy it. And I love that our kids are giving back to our community, so I'm really excited about that. As far as the Merrimack Village District regarding low salt use, I think it's great that they reached out to the school board, to have everybody, like, making sure that we're a partnership within the community. We have such issues within our water, and to be able to lower the salt intake, especially over the past three years, is incredible. I heard that Brian is very positive to the environment, it's a lot less, there's a lot less issues for animals, just nature in general, the environment. So, I'm excited that they reached out to our, our kids and our community to say, how can we, how can you guys help us? And it was a great partnership, just to hear that. And that's all, thank you.
All right. Well, we had a great meeting tonight, we had some wonderful recognitions, it's a good night, wonderful May, beautiful sun, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Motion made by Ken Martin.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi Halter, all those in favor say aye. Five zero zero. Thank you, and good night.